So today's session, we are looking at Christ among his churches. Christ among his churches. So, um, moderator, you can give us the, um.
Yeah, you have, um.
Screen sharing. Yeah, right, good, thanks so much, thanks so much. Alright, so Christ among his churches or authority, assessment and adoration. We are looking at chapters one to five today. So what we propose to do, we're gonna be looking at that sort of a, taking it chronologically from the book chronologically, over the next two sessions today and next week. And then we will be looking at things thematically, session four and five. And remember, it is for teaching, it's a teaching session. So we welcome your interaction. So do not hesitate if I do not see your comments. The moderator of our cell will, and they will alert me, okay? You can put up your hand. Yeah, you can put up your hand and they will, they will let me know. But we really appreciate because sometimes your questions have to clarify things, not only for you, but for the entire, all those on the platform. And, um, and so please, um. Okay, so Christ among the churches, authority, assessment and adoration. In terms of the assessment that term is used in education, what is happening is that Christ is making an evaluation of the churches, the seven churches. And we will see in chapters four and five, there's, there's a transition from what's taking place on earth to the throne room. You know, there's a change of scene. And, um, we can see that as though from chapter four to chapter twenty-two, might be looking towards more the future. What we can say is basically in chapters one to three, most of it is what was happening at the time. Alright, um, yeah, we, 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 we're gonna do that introduction shortly. Most of chapter, um, one to three, Christ in terms of on his throne. And chapters two with the letters to the churches. That is, uh, happening in the first century. Then, uh, the, the final decade, um, when John received the revelation, the revelation of Jesus Christ, which God gave to him to give to John. Alright, so, uh, and we could explain some of that a little more. I believe that's the, the best way to, to look at it. And what we might be seeing there is that we have argued in this approach, it's referred to as dispensation, a dispensational approach, is that the church would have been raptured, um, by chapter four, according to this, looking at it this way. So we are looking at a chronological and Christo-centric approach with modified classical dispensational insights. So let me break that down. Chronological just means time, chronology, time. Cronos and Christological, that it is Christ-centered. The book is really, the entire book is centered around Jesus Christ. The revelation, all of it is about Christ. Speaking about how he deals with the, the cosmic conflict. He will defeat the devil. The devil and evil will be able to, to be at its worst. But God stays in control and God will bring judgment on what will take place. But this is it. It is centered around Christ. And we are saying that we are looking at what we call a, a modified dispensational approach. Christ is glorified, we will see in this book. He is present among his people. He was present then, he continues to be present now. And he is uniquely worthy to fulfill God's redemption, redemptive plan. We was, we were here, um, then, um, before the scrolls are opened, there's a scroll and the people are saying, who is worthy, worthy to open the scroll? Then John started to read because he saw that nobody was able to open it. And then, then word came, yes, don't weep. The lion of the tribe of Judah has prevailed to open this road. Alright, so we've been looking at it. So last week we began our journey through the book of Revelation by laying a foundation of how we approach this powerful and often misunderstood book. We considered its purpose as a revelation. Notice, as had been pointed out by our moderator, well, it is a revelation, not a concealment. This book, uh, is intended to reveal Jesus Christ ultimately. It's a revelation of Jesus Christ given to his servants to strengthen, to encourage and prepare them for what lies ahead. Okay, so it was for that church back then in the first century there, in the final decade of the first century, when John is on the Isle of Patmos. But it is also to help, to help prepare us as people for what lies ahead. We explored the major interpretive approaches and affirmed the value of a thoughtful, Christ-centered reading that sees revelation as both pastoral and prophetic. Alright, the people were suffering and God is saying, I am with you. The, uh, he did not lose control of the world or of history. With, with that background lead, we now move forward to encounter Christ as he reveals himself in glory and addresses his church with messages that echo across the centuries. So the messages are for every century, including the twenty-first century at our time. And this is for every geographical location. The revelation was first given to John on the Isle of Patmos for churches that were Asia Minor, um, Western, modern day Turkey. But it is applicable for all of God's people in every geographical location of every age, of every age, um, every ethnicity. Alright, all of God's people for all time. Tonight we pick up in Revelation, chapter one, and move through to chapter five. Observing a grand shift from the suffering church on earth to the worshiping church in heaven. So that's what happens. We will see especially in chapters two and three, is the church that is suffering, facing all sorts of challenges. And we will look at that in a while. And several of you have already read the letters to the churches, right? So you see the churches are suffering and they are in conflict with the, with, with evil and so forth. But we'll see in chapters four and five, the church is in worship. There is worship taking place in heaven. So there's a, a shift. We, we begin with John's powerful vision of the risen Christ, who walks among his churches as Lord and judge. From there, we'll listen to the seven messages Christ delivers to real congregations, each with strengths, flaws and needed corrections. And reflect on their enduring relevance for us today. Finally, we'll be ushered into the heavenly throne room. We get an opportunity to go to the heavenly throne room where, where all of creation worships the one on the throne and the only one worthy to open the scroll, the Lamb who was slain. So here we go, as we continue, part one. Uh, and what we see is revelations, nature and purpose. Christ revealed. So we are saying here, it is an apocalypsis, apocalypsis. With meaning, it is a revealing. Okay, it is a revealing. It's an unveiling of divine truth. God does not want to obscure the truth. He doesn't want to conceal the truth. In this book, he is revealing, uncovering the truth. And, um, it concerns Jesus's lordship over history and his return. So some question whether he even rose from the dead. The book of Revelation saying, not only did he rise from the dead, but he is Lord of all. And, um, he is Lord and head of the church. It is given to Jesus. It is given through an angel. It is given to John and not for John to keep for himself, but for John to give to his servants. And, um, first addressed to the seven churches. So seven different messages for the churches. But the entire book will be circulated among all the churches. So people will get an idea of what he saved to them and also to all of the surrounding churches in the environment there. In, um, what we'll consider modern day Turkey, that time was Asia Minor. Alright, and the western part of Asia Minor. And we saw that there is a special blessing for those who read, for the one who reads, hears and keeps what is written. It is pastoral and prophetic, not merely symbolic or predictive. What, what we're seeing is, um, this book is to assist all of God's people wherever we are living, because from time to time, we are going through difficulties. And we will see that some of God's people may go through a greater intensity of persecution, a greater intensity of suffering. And it is meant to encourage us whatever we are going through. And John was saying, I too am your brother in the trials. I'm facing some of the trials too. And it is interesting how God did not leave John on the Isle of Patmos. In that state of being banished, God goes to him on that island. And God speaks to him in a special way to speak to his people from that time and henceforth. The greeting from the triune God written to the seven literal churches in Asia Minor, also represented representatives of the universal church. Alright, so these are seven we saw and we'll, we'll have a little map again for us to see again, that these were geographically located, uh, towns, um, that were part of the, um, of Asia Minor. So, um, God described, God is described as him who is and who was and is to come. He is the eternal Father. So past, present and future in one. Alpha and Omega, beginning and end, but he's everything in between. And ultimately, God has no beginning. He has no beginning. And this includes the triune God. Jesus has no beginning. The Holy Spirit has no beginning. The eternal God always existed. He exists and always will exist. The triune God is Alpha and Omega. Seven spirits, fullness of the Holy Spirit. You know, seven is a big number and a number perfection and, and you'll see it coming up over and over. And, um, Isaiah eleven verse two speaks about the Holy Spirit and the fullness and so forth. Jesus Christ, the faithful witness, his faithfulness in life, his faithfulness in death. He, he resurrected, he rose from the dead as he said he would. And he continues to reign. The book of Hebrews tells us that he lives to make intercession for us. Even now, he, he is at work making intercession for us as we live our lives in this world, as we engage in ministry, as we engage in VBS, as we engage in evangelism. He goes with us. Lo, I am with you even unto the end of the age, according to Matthew twenty-eight. The last verse there, alright? So he is the faithful witness in life, in death, resurrection and the rain. And who are we? We are loved by him. He loves us. We are freed from sins by his blood, to his fight. The second part of his fight. That's what made it possible for us to be rescued, the shedding of his blood. And with all the remission of sin, there's no forgiveness of sin, absolutely none. He made us a kingdom of priests. He made us kings and priests. Here's what he has done. He redeemed us from being rebels and he has exalted us. And we are co-heirs with him. We are kings and priests, priests. And this, this is an echo of Exodus nineteen verse six and first Peter two verse nine. We are kingdom, you know, of priests and so forth, um, to give worship to God. This is what God has done for us. And look at this, we are looking to, for his glorious return. And so it says, behold, verse seven, behold, he is coming with clouds. He is coming and no one can stop him. So he had the first coming and there's a second coming. And, um, Daniel seven verse thirteen, Zachariah twelve verse ten and Matthew twenty-four verse thirty. He is coming with, uh, with clouds. And that is certain, his second coming is sure. And there will be universal visibility of Christ's return. Even those who pierced him will see him, um, possibly referring to Israel or humanity generally. They, they will look on him whom they have pierced. And brothers and sisters, um, this has to do with Israel in particular. They will look on him whom they have pierced. So in general, throughout, um, throughout history until the post-Christ, the Jews have rejected Jesus as Messiah, most Jews. You have the messianic Jews and even in the early church, a lot of Jews were saved. And, um, most of the, the leaders of the early church would have been Jewish. So we have a lot of Jews who have been saved. But by and large, most Jews have rejected Christ as Messiah. At this point in time, the one nation that stands with the Jewish people in general, the one nation is the United States of America. And you know that even in the United States, you've seen over the last few years in particular, uh, a lot of antisemitism. You know, and sometimes people are associating it with, with Gaza and so on and so forth. But the point is, even at some of the leading Ivy League schools in the United States, there have been a lot of protesting and hostility to the Jewish people, Jewish students and on and on. Are you aware of that? Okay, the time will come when even America will stop supporting Israel. And all the nations will gather together and fight against Israel. This is likely to happen during the time of the great, uh, tribulation. This is likely to happen after somebody, the world will be plunged into so many economic issues, problems and political problems that it cannot solve. There will be, there will be somebody who they will identify as who will be claiming that he can solve the problems. He'd be referred to as the Antichrist. He will be almost as though he will be Satan, he'll get Satan's power and rule. But he wouldn't come just by that. He will come like a Messiah first to them, you know? And, uh, there will be a contract. There will be a contract that will be signed up, a peace agreement. And halfway during a peace agreement, uh, he will break it and will seek to attack Israel. And Israel will have nobody, no other nation to defend it. And if you look at Israel, um, where they are now, the nation, the area that they have there is about the size of Jamaica. I mean, Jamaica is bigger than all of the other English-speaking Caribbean countries. But in terms of ultimately, it's not really that large. Especially if you look at countries like Iraq and Iran and Turkey. And you compare Jamaica, I mean, Israel, it's very, very small. So they will, they will all gather together against Israel. Okay, so the antisemitism and so forth might only increase. The point is, we are really in the last days, that's the main point. But Jesus will come and save them. And this is likely to be, it's almost as though, if we were to look at it eschatologically, the second coming of Christ, it seems as though it will have two parts to it. Part one, within the second, is when he'll come and for the rapture and take his people away. The dead in Christ will rise first and then we who are alive and remain will be caught up together to meet the Lord in the air. He'll take us away. Once he takes us away, it's like salt and light being taken away. And things will get plunged into much greater problems and so forth. And that may be the, the beginning of the, the tribulation. And halfway through that is when the covenant will be broken, you know, and so forth. But he will come again and deliver Israel. They will look to him who was pierced. The stone that the builders rejected would have become the head cornerstone. You see, so Zachariah talks about that. And so this is the fact that Jesus Christ died is very significant for all of us. Okay, so, um, so there is visibility, they will look to him. Christ appears and I'll take some questions shortly, so please, um, you can write them in the, in the chat also. So disappearance was that you said at Patmos, a royal colony island for the testimony. So it would have been in the Mediterranean. So it would have been west, would have been west of, um, of the Asia Minor. Alright, Patmos would have been west of, of Asia Minor. And, um, Patmos in terms of flying, um, it could have been if you were in a place like, say, Greece, it might have been about one hour east of Greece. So those places still exist, you, you know? They're very much so. And John says, I was in the spirit on the Lord's day. So he had a divine encounter on the first day of the week. By the, the end of the first century, Sunday had become the primary day when Christians were worshiped. Christians who were either, either Jewish believers or Gentile believers, most of them were worshiping on the first day of the week in celebration of the day of the week Christ rose from the dead. Alright, it's the same first day of the week when the Holy Spirit came, the Pentecost and so on and so forth. So, um, so some people get confused with the, with the, the Sabbath and some of the Adventist people try to say Constantine in the fourth century changed the Sabbath. Constantine did not change the Sabbath. The Christian, the early Christians, most of them, the Jews were meeting first on the Sabbath. But then as more Gentiles got saved and as the gospel spread to Gentile areas, the churches that were founded there, when Jewish people got saved, they worshipped in the same community like in Corinth and in Galatia and some of these places. The Jews and the Gentiles, the Jews who became Christians, they worshipped on the first day of the week. And John is saying that he was in the spirit on the Lord's day. So the concept of the Lord's day became a technical phrase for the first day of the week. And it's not the first time they're talking about the believers meeting on the first day of the week. In Acts chapter twenty, the apostle Paul, he met with the, um, the believers on the first day of the week. He was preaching to them. They had breaking of bread. Remember that whole situation there? It was on the first day of the week. Over in first Corinthians chapter sixteen, it was on the first day. He said, when you get together, he was talking to the churches at Corinth and the churches of Galatia. When you get together on the first day of the week, you have to put aside an offering, that a special offering that they were raising for a project ahead, the poor scenes in Jerusalem. The believers were meeting on the first day of the week. Many, some of the Christians get trapped, uh, trapped up and so forth, tripped up with this. And just the Adventists, as they talk, know what is only on the Sabbath. If they choose to worship on the Sabbath, that is okay. But there is nothing that says that, that when we look at the history of the church, the believers were meeting on the first day of the week before hundreds of years, before Constantine came on the scene. Alright, but with some of that discussion will be for another meeting. But while we are here, we just want to help you to understand if you are worshiping on the first day of the week, that was the primary day, the apostle Paul and them met Gentile believers on, and they were worshiping from the very first century. The appearance of Christ, Christ's appearance is filled with divine symbolism. Right, he had a robe and a sash. What is that a long word? Priestly and royal. You know, a robe and a sash, priestly and royal, referring to Exodus twenty-eight. He had white hair, um, eternal wisdom. It is referring as though, you know, like a sage, a sage. Eyes like, um, blazing fire, penetrating in judgment. Judgment meaning that he can see right through, uh, whatever the situation is. Feet like bronze, strength and judgment. Voice like waters, spoke with authority. Seven stars, um, this seemed to be referring to angelic angels, possibly pastors or divine agents, you know? Perhaps angelic messengers responsible for, for the churches. Could be a sword from, from the mouth, his word judges and defends. And when John saw Christ, John's reaction was he fell as though he was dead. Similar thing happened to Daniel in Daniel's vision. He said, it's almost as though the vision freaked him out. Uh, Isaiah had a similar experience. Who is me? I am undone. Ezekiel had a similar experience, I mean, in his vision. And Christ's words, he said to John, don't be afraid, do not be afraid. I am the first and the last. And so what we have is divine comfort and authority. He said, I am in charge, don't be afraid. I, uh, you have already been banished. I am here to comfort you and to comfort the churches that are suffering. And so he kind of, uh, helped him out. So what's the application of this into this vision? And it would be application for us too. A right vision of Christ gives the church courage. A right vision of Christ gives the church clarity. And a right vision of Christ brings conviction in uncertain times. So in the first century, when the angel appeared to John to give him the revelation of Jesus Christ, the churches were facing uncertain times, difficult times. And God sent his servant, uh, this revelation of Jesus. And this vision was to cause them to be courageous. This vision was intended to bring clarity to the situation, who is really in charge? Things are looking out of order and chaotic, yes, because of sin, it is. Because of human rebellion, because of the conflicts of the, the enemy. But the enemy is not in charge, God is still in control. And God is going to deal with all of that and to give us conviction, to tell us be strong in these uncertain times. So listen, so we have conflict in Ukraine and Russia. Yeah? And the Russians were hoping to bring this to an end. But Ukraine has been fighting back courageously. They, 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 they don't have as many soldiers and they could easily lose in a battle of attrition in terms of the number, but they didn't provoke this war, the Russians have. But they have been fighting valiantly. And I trust we can pray for them. You have had the issue with Hamas and Israel. And the issue is not Israel and the Palestinian people in general, but Israel and Hamas. And Hamas has embedded itself among the civilian population. And they want to claim some of the, the, the protections of certain conventions in terms of war that is not supposed to affect civilians, and that's true. But when they have been hiding themselves under kindergarten's gardens and they're hiding themselves in hospitals, they are violating international law too and, and so forth. And the, the world with all of its uncertainty, with the tariff issues and the uncertainty. And one is that certain way stock markets. And what is that, sitting where stock markets will go and all of that, listen. All of that is real and we in this world, we face our challenges. But we look at Revelation chapter one and Christ is on the throne. He is powerful and a right vision of Christ will give to the church and his people courage. Clarity and conviction. And even though we are in uncertain times, we know how the story ends. Because this book tells us how history will be wrapped up. History will be wrapped up. God is in charge of history. He's the one who started history with creation. And he, and in the way, the first garden of Eden, the first paradise. And he's gonna have a second paradise for us, new heavens and a new earth and so forth. And he would deal with the issue that has caused all of this, sin. Because there will be no more tears in Revelation twenty two, no more tears, no more pain, no more distress. None of these things and sin is banished. And those who practice it will be quarantined forever and paying a penalty. And so let me just make the point, for believers, the book of Revelation is a source of great encouragement. For unbelievers, it should be of great dread in the sense. That if you believe the book of Revelation and you're unsaved and you stay in that context. Be sure that what it says of the unbelievers, it will happen to you and it's not going to be pretty. That's why we do evangelism, because he wants us to let people know. So that they could come out of that danger and come into his salvation and so on. Having reached there, let me, that would be like chapter one. And make some of those points and a number of other things. Let me see if there are any questions, because we are not dealing with a lecture, we're dealing with with interaction and teaching. So I wanna give you an opportunity, please, so don't be afraid to ask your question. Are there any questions in the chat? Mister Moderator or pastor?
No questions, that's it.
Okay. I wanted to hear any questions from there, brothers and sisters, you can put up your hand. I talked about the great tribulation, we'll come up to that again. I wanted to kind of let us. We are, I just if you.
Have a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think. Whenever we talk about. Revelation and understanding that a lot of what we're. We are going to see will be real, real time and we, you know. This conversation, this discussion, plus what we're actually seeing in Iran and in Israel. How do, how do we? As Christians, especially in Jamaica, where. You know, for want of a better term, it's not, it doesn't feel like it's affecting us. But as Christians, should we be affected? Should we, should there be a heart towards Israel? Should there be a heart towards what's going on? Or should we just be in watchful mode of like, okay, let's, let's see what happens from here?
Okay, good question. What I would say is. He, Jesus has asked us to watch and pray. Alright, and remember we have, the church is around the world, so we have believers. In many countries, in places like even. We talk about Turkey. Turkey was, those seven churches were in Western Turkey. And except for one of the churches, I think might be Saudis, one of the. There is really no church there anymore, you know. Saudis might have something like a monk, some monks, that meeting, you know. But then that a whole lot of people go there anyway. When people go there, they bring us tourists to visit the seven churches, okay? So, so that's the situation. But we need to be, we need to be concerned and we need to pray. For instance, here's the reality. The reality is that. Among the Palestinians, among the Palestinians. There are many Palestinians who are believers. There's a Bible college and there's Jerusalem seminary and there's also. Bible institutions where Christians are trained. And we have more Palestinians who are Christians, genuine Christians. And there are Christians who are in Lebanon and Christians who are in Syria, you know. And I guess because I've had the privilege to serve as president of the Caribbean Evangelical Theological Association. And we are meeting colleagues who are leaders from this and they give us updates, you know. So the wars affect them, we have Christians in Ukraine, you see? So we have Christians on all of these different places in parts of Africa and India. And so sometimes when you have a revival among Hinduism, especially in northern India. And they're persecuting Christians, if we were there, we would be persecuted, because what they will. These people are Indian descent, Indian ethnicity of there. But because they believe in Christ, they're persecuted. Because there are not just views and ideologies, religious views. But it's also the spiritual forces behind the attacks. So yes, we should be concerned. But as we look at the word of God, what we need to see is what the Bible said two thousand years ago and more. It's coming to pass. We are seeing that Israel, even in the twenty first century, is being increasingly isolated. The United Nations in general has been hostile, in general, has been hostile to Israel, you know, and so forth. The European Union, if you see, most of them have been hostile to Israel. If one cannot justify everything that Israel does, you're dealing with people. But you've got to also understand that Israel faces an existential threat. Even with what happened with, what happened with Iran. Iran has been saying, and not only Iran. Iran has been sponsoring terrorists. In terms of not the Assyrian people per se, but the people who. They give their money to fight, they give them weapons to fight because they want Israel destroyed. From the river to the sea, they want Israel as it would be pushed right into the Mediterranean Sea. That's the idea, they don't want Israel to exist. So part of that is the same kind of anti-Jewish thing that Herod and these, some of these other people had. You know, if you had given some of these people the privilege to wipe out, you would have wiped out the Messiah. The Messiah's parents and all and all, it's the same spirits that are working and fighting against God's people. And Israel, I said, after the Holocaust, after the Holocaust in World War Two, they said never again. So sometimes they do engage in preemptive strikes because nobody might defend them. And that's where part of it is, so it is no easy situation. We feel the pain, we feel the difficulty, it's a major struggle. And if you're on the ground, you know, even very, you're hearing recently. That the United Nations wants to get aid and food supplies for the people of Gaza. Alright, the Palestinian people, but guess what? Hamas has been taking the food that they get free and they were using the food. They're putting high prices on it for the Palestinian people. Who they're supposed to be represented, for them to pay high prices for the food. And then, then they get the money, they use the money to buy weapons and this and that, take care of themselves, you know. So Israel has come up with a plan to try to provide the food for the people. And Hamas has decided to kill some of the aid workers. Because they think, I want to control the, these good things. So the people will look to me and they would not look to Israel also. So, and what we will see more and more is that this will only increase. My point, my point is this, that what the word of God says hundreds and thousands of years ago is happening now. It brings, it makes a point that we could depend upon the word of God. I have been looking at it, brothers and sisters. Over in the Old Testament, God said to the, to the people of Israel. That if you, if you serve me and you do, you keep my covenant and so forth. One of you will chase a thousand and two of you will put ten thousand to flight, okay? Remember that? One which is a thousand and two of you will put ten thousand to flight. Look what Israel has been able to do in terms of standing up in a seven day war against Egypt. And several of the, the countries that are on them in the seven day war. And even look at what they've been able to do in their preemptive strike against Iran recently. With all of the oil that Iran has and all that they have, Israel own the sky. It's like a few of these people, I mean, I say a few, might be hundreds of planes and so forth, right? But Iran has much, many more people and the problem is not even the Iranian people in this case. The problem has to do with the Ayatollah and their regime. Because, you know, some of the Iranian people already like how they're being ruled by the Ayatollah support. But my point is, the people in authority, they're using the resources, the fundy men. Before the Assad, the Assad regime that failed Hezbollah and so on and so forth. But Israel has been able to survive. And what we see is even that principle, one of them can put a thousand to flight. Because we have the jets and they have things that they have read and so forth. But we have got to be concerned. There's a lot of damage that takes place on either side. You know, human life is lost. Even with the Russia, Ukraine, over one million Russians have been killed or injured since the war started. And there are reports that about some four thousand Russians. Russians are, Russians are killed every month. Okay, so that's war. And in Ukraine, a lot of the Ukrainian people, some of them who are believers and they had Bible colleges there. You can hardly do any serious Bible study, that study, you can do Bible study. But have a seminary in some of those places and they had several seminaries there. But when they have war, some of the people have to go and fight. The women and the children, some of them have been dislocated or have gone out of the country for security. And they're praying for their husbands, some of whom would be injured, would die, but they have to fight and they can't just move and die. So yes, we've got to be concerned of what's taking place at the international community. But my point is, even as we are concerned, we are not to be fearful. We are not to be fearful about the volatility of the stock market. Yeah, you understand, you're not to let our pressure go up because of what we are seeing. God is still in control and this is what we want to do and that is the last point I made. Okay, a right vision of Christ. Gives the church courage, clarity and conviction in uncertain times. Alright, I hope I've been able to answer that question. So we have to be compassionate, but we've also got to recognize that God is in charge.
Yes, definitely, definitely, thank you.
Alright, I saw somebody clapping a while ago, not for me. And maybe they were happy about the question, is that sister Beverly, you wanted to ask something?
Yes, doctor. This is not the main question, but pertaining to what we'll just discuss. Is Israel and Jerusalem one and the same?
Well, the capital.
For the peace of Jerusalem, so I don't know if it's the same place we're talking about.
Well, in this sense, yes, in the sense that we are talking about it here, yes. Because Jerusalem would be the capital of modern day Israel. And actually, it used to be the capital, remember? That's where David was, you know, from, remember before, four thousand years ago. Because the capital. And because the children of Israel were disobedient, the northern tribes. The northern tribes were taken away by the Assyrians in seven hundred and twenty-two B.C., that would have been the eighth century. And God saved the southern tribes because of Ezekiel. Ezekiel repented, remember when God destroyed Sinaka River then? And they survived and five hundred and eighty-six, eighty-seven. Then Nebuchadnezzar attacked and destroyed. Took a lot of captives into Babylon. That is because in spite of the fact that they were disobedient, the prophets called them to repent, Jeremiah, Amos. And so on, they did not listen and they went into exile. And then they were, they were brought back after seventy years. Jeremiah said, after seventy years, he'll come back, he came back under Zeroboam, as governor. Ezra and Nehemiah, Nehemiah to build a wall, Ezra led in worship and some of those things, you know. And then they were, again, in eighty-seventy, because they had rejected Christ. In eighty-seventy, there was this, with the Roman Empire now, it was scattered all over the world. And God says, he can bring them back. And after World War Two, they were brought back and in nineteen forty-eight, they established a new state. But it was, God has given them the land, so you see what's happening? I want us to see that God said, I'll bring you back to the land. So the land is. They, they have no other state, no other Jewish state nowhere. They may live in different places, but wherever they have lived, very often, if you follow them through the Middle Ages. Or in Europe, you'll see that they were expelled and they were persecuted out of antisemitism. Before Columbus sailed from there, Spain had a lot of persecution. Portugal had a lot of persecution of Jews and so forth. So they're saying this is our land and they're saying we are not prepared to have what happened to us in the Holocaust happen again. We see what has happened in terms of the October seventh attacks sometime ago, because they were trying to live in peace. But Hamas, not only the Palestinian people now, the problem is not with the Palestinian people. Yeah, Hamas might be some Palestinians, but it's like what happens sometimes in some of our garrison communities. Where some people become dons and they want to, they create all kinds of chaos and havoc. And they mess up the lives of young women and they want the daughters of people who live there and you have to get your daughter out. And on and on, it's Hamas is like that, the higher level, right? So not only the Palestinian people, and so they, they create problems for the Palestinian people and so on. So this is what's happening, so yes, the word of God is coming to pass. The word of God.
Take away the Bible, so that's one other term, but what I really want to ask you is about worshiping on Saturday. On Sunday, doesn't matter which day for me. But because we were saying that Constantine changed and then I'm hearing now that is the Christians who choose to worship on Sunday. So what, when the Bible said to worship on the Sabbath day, that's where the Adventists taking their cue from. What I want to find out, if the Lord really give them that day. Or as you say, the Christian choose to worship that day, what the Adventists choose to say. This is the person that changed it.
Okay, so what is happening, I'm gonna try to get to the cheese, because we could take off, that could take another time, but let me, let me get to the cheese. What happened is this, in the same way, you have circumcision. That was part of a covenant that God made with the children of Israel. Right, the circumcision of the boy children on the eighth day, right? A covenant that Abraham did, yeah, it happened with Ishmael, also with Isaac and all of them were, on the eighth day, the child would be. Me and Jack, children will be circumcised, right? The Sabbath was also a covenant that God had made with Israel. Because there's no evidence that, that the children of Israel were keeping the Sabbath when they were in Egypt for forty years. You with me? Alright, so, so what the Adventists are doing basically. It is, it is a time of rest, it is important that we rest one day in seven. But they're taking it that way. What we, what we are learning is, I'm suggesting to you, the apostle Paul, who was Jewish. And he would, at first, when he was going to the, he was going to the Jewish people for evangelism. He will go into their synagogues, that's a data. He will go into their synagogues, that's the day they meet, on the Sabbath day, that's the day they meet. When the church spread and many Gentiles were getting saved, a lot of the Gentiles were meeting on the first day of the week. And if you read Corinthians or you read Galatia or Paul Galatia, the church is meeting and even John. There, there, there's a first day of the week is called the, um, the Lord's Day, he got his vision on the Lord's Day. The church were meeting on the first day of the week. And this included converts, Jewish converts who came to Christ as Savior, right? Most of the Jews rejected Christ as Savior. Because they believe that curses everyone who hang on a tree, you understand? He had to hang on a tree, so they, they say that he could not be the Messiah. Plus they had problem because they thought that he was an illegitimate child, right? Okay, but tha- that was because the, what God impregnated. Cause Mary to be impregnated so that Jesus would have flesh, but he was not, he did not have sin. All right, so it was, okay, so now, I don't have any problem with a, a number of the Adventist people being saved. That's my issue with them. But when they commonly say that we must worship on the first day of the week, they are absolutely wrong. If they wanna choose to, yes, they are wrong, until they're making it that way. And when they engage in saying that Constantine changed the day of worship. From the seventh day, for Christians, from the seventh day to the first day of the week. They are engaging what I will call and I explain it, historical revisionism. We wanna kind of get a point, we've got to get, you see, some, if you don't have good doctrine, it can mess you up. It creates problem in your mind, you understand? It causes churches to split and all kinds of stuff. So we better teach the right thing so people understand and they're not waffling and they're wondering and they're wondering. Okay, so I am addressing the question because you raised it and, um, because I, yeah.
I understand, I understand now that you say it's a covenant, so I, I get, I get it.
Right. So, right, so God required them, the Jewish people to do it, but it was not necessarily something for us. All right, but as I say, questions are important because your question and I tried to answer your question helps other people as well. All right, thanks, all right, so let's move on to the letters themselves. Oh, what is that, wow, two more minutes, all right. Okay, okay, so the letter, the letters themselves, um, the letters to the seven churches, Christ loving. Yet penetrating evaluation. All right, so common patterns in each letter, there's an address. All right, Christ's title. And, um, you have a commendation or criticism. And then you might have an exhortation with a promise, as the case might be. Um, so let's just see, um, here. So for instance, I would just look at one of them, but you, you'll get it the field. To the church, to the angel of the church in Ephesus writes. The words of him who holds the seven stars, you know, that is Christ before he takes the title. The one who holds the seven stars in his right hand, who walks among the seven golden stands. And he says, I know your words, so you see, so there is this pattern, there's this model. Yeah, you know, there's this form that all of the, all of the, uh, is evaluation of each church. Right, two of the churches, there's nothing that he condemns them for, all right? Um, so two of the churches, but basically you have the, um. Uh, criticism of five of the churches, two of them, there's no criticism. All right, then we have Laodicea, um, chapter, um, chapter two to seven. Was, uh, so seven literal churches, timeless spiritual application. So what we could do from this is, we can learn timeless lessons from these churches. So these were real churches that were founded and John would have been a pastor of the churches in this area. And the emperor at the time banished him because he wanted, you know, strike the shepherd and the sheep should be scattered, that was a hope. You know, but while the shepherd John was scattered, um, was banished. Um, there was still a word, he was encouraging them through this. Pastor, we can look at the other thing, so the, the lessons, you could look at the other slide, thanks so much. All right, just to remind us, into the geographical location. All right, the, what we are seeing is where the stars are. Uh, if you look at it, it, it basically goes as a circuit. If you start where Ephesus is and you go, uh, you follow the smaller, Pugama. Tyra, Saudis, Philadelphia, Laodicea, it's like a circuit, you know? Um, uh, and so, and those are the, the letters to the churches in that sequence. And the, uh, where you see in that green, the green will be the Mediterranean Sea. And Patmos would be an island off of that, uh, in the Mediterranean Sea. Okay, thanks so much, just to remind you that these are physical churches and so forth, the next slide please. Let me see how we could move this along a bit. All right, so Ephesus, he said Ephesus lost its first love. It, 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 you know, Smuna, but was faithful in suffering, Smuna, faithful in suffering. And they didn't have any indictment against murder. Pugama, they had doctrinal compromise. Tyra, tolerance of sin. Saudis spiritually dead. Philadelphia, faithful obedience, again, they, they didn't have any indictment against them, nothing negative to say. Laodicea, they thought they were rich, uh, but they were poor and wretched and blind. Self deceived, self, you know, because it might have been a more affluent, uh, church. But he says, you are lukewarm and I don't hot nor cold and because of that I spewed you out of my mouth. Okay, let's look at the next slide. So basically, that's a summary of what, um. And as you read the, these two chapters, there are three names that come up, Jezebel. Um, Belam and Nicolaitans, I thought I will, um, uh, put something there to explain these things. So there, the references to Jezebel, Belam and the Nicolaitans appear in the book of Revelations. In chapters two and three, as part of the risen crisis messages to the seven churches in Eshah. Each of these references is, is symbolic and symbolic and loaded with historical and theological significance. Here is an evaluation, an elaboration of each Jezebel, the next slide. So in chapter two, verse twenty, it says, but I have this against you. You tolerate that woman Jezebel, who calls herself a prophetess. And is teaching and seducing my servants to practice sexual immorality and to eat food sacrificed to idols. Um, all right, so that's chapter two, verse twenty. And, um, so the background to this, Jezebel was a notorious wife of King Yehab of Israel. A Phoenician princess who promoted Baal worship, opposed the prophets of Yahweh. Notably Elijah, remember the encounter, and was linked to corruption, idolatry and sexual immorality. In Revelation, the name Jezebel is likely symbolic, representing a false prophetess in the church of Tyra. Was leading believers astray, much like the historical Jezebel corrupted Israel. So they see, you know, so it's used, she is seen as a pattern. She may have encouraged accommodation with local pagan practices. Perhaps linked to trade guilds involving idolatrous feasts and sexual rights. Uh, what's the theological significance of this? Jezebel represents internal corruption, syncretism, that is, syncretism is mixing up. They, they try to mix, yeah, God, the real God with the false gods, you know? And the danger of unchecked false teaching within the church. Okay, so that's, that's Jezebel, what about Bela? Uh, chapter two, verse fourteen, but I have this, the next time on Bela. But I have this against you, you have some there who hold the teaching of Bela. Who taught Bela to put a stumbling block before the sons of Israel. Um, that is going back, um, over to the text in Numbers, right? What's the background? Bela was a prophet for hire, what he was a mercenary prophet. Okay, a mercenary, he, he was a famous prophet, but he wanted to go to the highest bidder. All right, remember in Numbers twenty-two to twenty, that is twenty-four. Though he initially refused to curse Israel because he wanted to curse them because of the money. But he says, I cannot, God has blessed them and I can't put that, I cannot change that. I can't put it in reverse gear, you know? And, but he later advised Bela, who hired him, I can't curse them, but he said, Bela, if you want to destroy them, get them into immorality. So he told Bela, king of Moab, to entrap Israel through idolatry and sexual immorality. So because of that, God judged them, Israel's, you know? So in Revelation, Jesus refers to Pugama, Pugama, where some held to the teaching of Bela. This likely alludes to a group within the church compromising with the surrounding pagan culture. Especially in ways that involve idolatrous feasts and immoral behavior. So you could have had a lot of immorality that developed by the end of the first century, some of these, in this particular area. The theological significance, Belams symbolizes those who for gain or comfort. Lead others into compromise with the world, particularly regarding idolatry and moral laxity. And it's, it's, it's kind of a shocking, you know? Um, as we speak of in the United States, but we have problems in the Caribbean too. But sometimes you have churches and you wanna, what kind of church is that? Sometimes people living anyhow and they only choir and the pastor might know, but because, you know? All kinds of stuff going on, you know what I mean? There's a kind of a compromise and it's, there's this extreme and all kinds of stuff and so. But it's, it was an issue even way back then. What about the Nicolaitans? Um, yet this I have, this I have against you. You, you hear the work of the Nicolaitans, and that is in chapter two, verse six, and also in chapter two, verse fifteen, which I also hate. Um, so the background, the Nicolaitans are somewhat mysterious. They are mentioned in connection with Ephesus. Where their works are hated and Pugama, where their teachings are followed. Some early Christian writers like Irenaeus and Hippolytus, these were some church fathers. Associated them with moral compromise, promoting licentiousness, I mean, living anyhow, we can live anyhow. And participation in pagan rituals. Some speculate a link between Nicholas of Antioch, Acts six, seven, five. Though there is no biblical confirmation, history doctrinally, what's the teaching? Like, it's likely encourage Christians to compromise with idolatry and immorality under the guise of Christian liberty. What some people thought is that maybe, uh, sin does not affect the spirit. It only affects the body, which is foolishness, because the Bible says that our bodies are the temple of the living God. But they know false doctrines have a way of trying to go off, off key and so forth. All right, so the Nicolaitans represent heretical teachings that blew the moral distinction of the church from the pagan world. God has called upon us to live differently, um, uh, moralized a different. We eat, we can eat the same menu, we could eat Akian swordfish like everybody has. Uh, fried dumpling, uh, rosi, I'm all of that. When I come to moral living, there's a distinction that God wants us to make. Let me just wrap up this and I pick up part three next week. Uh, summary, each of these figures represent a threat from within the Christian community. Jezebel forced prophecy and seduction into immorality and idolatry. Belam corrupt leadership that facilitates compromise for personal gain. Nicolaitans doctrinal and ethical laxity under a distorted view of grace and liberty. In Revelation, the risen Christ warns churches not only about external persecution. But also about internal corruption, so there's external persecution that's a problem. But another issue could be internal corruption in the church. These references call for vigilance, doctrine, doctrinal integrity and moral purity within the church. Okay, what's the application? Christ is present among his churches today. These messages still call us to purity. It call us to perseverance, we've got to keep on going, he who endures to the end shall be saved. And passionate love, the Ephesians had lost their first love, Jesus says, repent. You need to have your first love again. All right, so we will wrap up there, I had some more for the night, but it's, um, our time is up for now, I'll pick up. Um, uh, chapters four and five and we'll continue next week. But any questions there, anything for clarification, has something become clearer to you? Uh, maybe your comments could also help us.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
Doctor Oliver, um, I'm not, I hope I'm not, we're not digressing here. But, um, I have a problem. Um, when you mentioned several times that, um, there are tribulations to come. But we should be of good cheer and be encouraged. How do you encourage someone? I, I have had a struggle since last weekend when I heard about the tragedy in, in Texas.
Yeah.
And, um, that this was a Christian community, a Christian camp. And all of these people were washed away and that my daughter died in, in twenty nineteen. She met her demise and not many people know that. People thought she drowned, but she fell fifty feet and broke her neck. And when I saw, um, images on the television of this woman who was. Um, holding on to, to a tree for several hours before help came to her. I ca- I couldn't help during twen- twenty nineteen and, and recently. Wondering whether my daughter died on impact or the, cause she was where she was, she went there from mid morning to midday. And she wasn't, her body was not found until twenty nine, until, um, six thirty that evening. Now, as what as I grappled with and I thought with. You know, did she die on impact or was she suffering and crying out for help and nobody was here to help her? Because she was obviously alone, I don't know what happened. But my struggle is, and for persons on the fence, how do you tell people to be encouraged? In a situation like what happened on the weekend here? All Christians, mainly Christians, all, so far, a hundred and odd persons have either died or been, been unaccounted for. How do you expect people to be of good cheer in situations like these? I have a problem and I have a battle with the mind right now, because this whole thing has come back to me. Full force and has reminded me of my own daughter's death.
Yes, it has acted as a, thanks for sharing, a very good question. Okay, what we need to recognize is, is, is this. When Docus died in the book of Acts, the believers were not rejoicing. When Stephen died, when he was thrown to death, the believers were not rejoicing, the men mourned. And there is an adverb used, they mourn deeply for Stephen. All right, when Docus died, the widows mourned. And so there is a place, a legitimate place for believers to mourn. And for people to mourn when there is tragedy. That tragedy, when there's loss, there's real grief, there is real grief. And you have, you have pointed out, as you have shared in just maybe less than a minute. That even the grief, something that happened years ago. Um, this event has triggered it for you into your memory. Causing you to identify, in one case, I, I heard that twin sisters. Um, died holding each other when they found them. So, uh, one of the parents, he, he lost two of his daughters. And in America, a lot of families, they only have about two or three children, you know, there are. Like how we used to have plenty of children in, in the Caribbean. So in losing one or two children is like you're losing almost your whole family. That is not something that you could be, I, I, so we could rejoice about, there's nothing to rejoice about. And even the period of war is nothing to rejoice about. Because as I pointed out earlier, when I talked about what's going on in, in places like Ukraine and so forth, as people fight. Or I pointed out that in Palestine. um, a lot of the people there are the Palestinians, some of them, and none of them are believers, genuinely not everybody, you know? Just as we are believers in Jamaica, Trinidad, everybody in Jamaica is a real believer or whatever. But you have so many believers in Palestine, among the Palestinians, you have a lot of genuine believers. And sometimes when Hamas hides among them and Israel tried to attack them, sometimes believers get uh, injured and die. When these things happen, there is a place for genuine grief, genuine mourning. And so we empathize with you on that. Uh, but what, where, where we go further though, is that, so we feel a grief and we should experience it. But I, I don't think we evangelicals and we Pentecosters have had a sound theology of grief. You know, because we like to, we like the more on the rejoicing side. And in a service of Thanksgiving, we're glad that somebody has gone on, especially if the person has lived for a long time with the Lord. We don't need to also, while we rejoice that the person is better off, we need to sometimes recognize that the family, they're feeling that loss and they're processing that. And so far, especially when you have a tragedy. I've had, um, pastors that I know, one pastor lost his son, he lost his son in England. Bright fellow doing well in a motor vehicle accident, he was driving a car. I know another pastor from Barbados, he and his wife, they lost their son who was taken away, drowned off one of the beaches in Barbados, they're from Barbados, you know what I mean? I heard there was a story, um, some of you may have known the story on the platform. There is this, I think, a leader in the church somewhere in the Karenan area. He lost two of his boys, one, they jumped in and they, they drowned. Some of you will know that story. This happened just about a year or two, within the last two years, and it was in the newspaper. That's pain. We don't rejoice at that. But in, in dealing with the pain, we also recognize that, especially if the person wasn't in the Lord. We recognize that, you know, one day we'll see them again. That is a part of the comfort. It was not the end, you know? And so, so we, we, so we deal with that, that's attention. That's attention we have, but it is real, especially no parent wants likes the fact when their child dies before them. No parents. Um, my, my elder son, he was married, uh, we have two sons, no daughters. And the, the two boys were married to two fine young ladies and, um, they were really, really great. And my older, older son, his, his wife died about four, four, four years, four years, four years uh, ago of stage four cancer. No, that was not a, that, um, it, it was diagnosed very late. And she died shortly after, within two or three months. Yeah, she died about within a week. She was after the diagnosis, um, of it. And I feel the pain, but in terms of her biological parents, this was the only daughter for her biological parents, the only daughter. And she is such a fine child. Her father still have not gotten over it. You know, he's still in a kind of a days and still withdrawn. He goes out to church and so forth. Somebody said to me, well, after many, you know? Uh, somebody reported, somebody who knew where, said to a friend of somebody who was on that church, I like pastor. He said, so and so, that person lived for his God, his church and his daughter, and his trainee. And his daughter loved him. You know, so what we're going to realize is, in this life, because of the reality of sin, not personal sin. Because of what has happened, it has brought pain for all of us, all of us.
How do you explain God's sovereignty? The person sitting on the fence, you're trying to get somebody to come into the kingdom and all of these things happen. How do you explain that God is still sovereign, that he's in control? Why does he allow these things to happen to good people?
Okay, and we, we need to understand that it happens, it happens in this life because of the reality of sin.
Okay.
You, you, you understand? Not personal sin. There are persons who have been abiding by the, the regulations and the road and they're doing what is right. Somebody is drinking, is, uh, under the influence of alcohol, driving under the influence. They're totally drunk, they run into them and sometimes guess who dies? The person who's obeying the law. Yeah, yeah, you know? So sometimes good things in this world, good things happen, bad things happen to good people. You know, uh, and so we recognize in this world we are vulnerable. We depend upon God. We, we appreciate all the blessings he has given us for children, anything good. But we also need to hold it with our hand and say, oh, God. You know, as Job says, the Lord gives and the Lord takes, you know? But we still feel the pain, you, you know, we process it. And then we have the memory and so forth. But, and then the church also needs to be able to comfort and encourage. And as you, you know, that question you think, I tell you, I tell you the truth. I feel it for my son and the, the, the death of, of his wife too, you, you, you understand? I say to myself, it could have been my daughter, you know, my daughter-in-law. And then, uh, was it sometime last year or the year before? It might have been the year before. One of, one of my friends, it might have been early last year, I think. A, a, a youngster who, past a colleague of mine. Um, uh, his son was just a couple of years older than my older son. And he died suddenly in his bed. Some rare condition that he had. And he was well and he climbed Blue Mountain so many times and fit and eat well and so forth. But he may have overworked, maybe, you know, quite a picked up some virus, you're not sure. Alright, they, they had some recondition, but the point is he died. And I say to myself, life is really something. This guy was a, he had his masters in engineering. He first he had an undergraduate degree from St. Augustine, U W I St. Augustine in Trinidad, you know? And he worked, he went and he got a masters in the States. Nice fellow, nice fellow, involved in the church, in the tech, in the, um, technical field and I don't know. And I say to myself, it could have been my, one of my, my sons. I knew this guy from when they were young and we worked together, his father, myself. And he had a lovely, uh, his father was married to a lovely lady too, who, you know? And what I'm saying is, these things happen in this life, you know? So when we come to Revelation, it says, there will be no more tears, no more nights. We understand what it is saying because the former things are passing away. But in this life, we depend upon the grace of God. We depend upon the comfort of the Holy Spirit. And that's part of it. And that's why we're saying that this book is both pastoral and prophetic. Be with me pastoral in that it helps us to deal with pain because what's going to happen is a lot of God's people, some of us, some of us we right now, in different places where we're being persecuted. Some are being killed, some of the children can't go to school because the state or the community in which they're living, they try to penalize parents and penalize children and all and all. Parents go to jail, especially fathers, and the children can't get a job because they are Christian, you know? So that's, thank God, it's not the case in Jamaica, but we have all around the world as we're speaking right now, Christians are being, are suffering too. But God is saying, it will come to an end. So we hold on to the promise and that's where the comfort is. But we, we feel the pain and we should be allowed to feel it.
It's easier said than done sometimes.
No, no, no. And that, and that is the truth. And the other thing is about grief, grief is not linear. You don't go from one, two, three, one to ten. You may, you might, you might move on, one, two, three, a- after sometime, or four. And then you go back right back to two. And what happens to is the trigger. What really causes for you right now is the trigger. And sometimes what might trigger it is her birthday, you know?
Exactly, because she just had her birthday, her birthday just passed too, and this still happened, you know?
Yes, so you remember the birthday. He said, what a lovely child I had, God, why you have to take that? You, you know, is that, you're going and, you know, but you know what? We can ask God those questions. You don't be afraid to ask, ask God those questions. But we need to have the, uh, community where we understand and where we support and so forth. So this life is going to be very uncertain. As we speak, I preached a, a New Testament, which I've got up in, in, um, the Maryland area on Sunday. And there was this retired lady who, she, she comes, she's in the choir and so forth, but she's retired, retired nurse, I guess. And, uh, we got a call yesterday that this sister, my wife was actually asking me to, ask her to pray for that this sister, on her way to church on Sunday morning, she had an accident. And, um, one of the legs, uh, had maybe fractured or broken in three places. Senior person, but where, you know, devoted and so forth, on her way to church. I say, God, I don't understand it. You understand? So that part of it, this is this life full of trials and pain. But God walks with us in the pain, with the pain. He shows up, the John on the Isle of Patmos banished and so forth and says, I have not abandoned you. I am with you still. Okay, let me turn over. Thanks so much for your question. Let me turn over to the moderator or pastor. I, because of the time, so forgive me, but I was trying to answer the question. Thank you so much for the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Oliver. And don't, brethren, if you have questions for Dr. Oliver, uh, don't be afraid, drop me a note. I will pass them to him so that over the course of the next couple of weeks, he, he may be able to address them. Alright, particularly questions related to tonight's presentation. Thanks again, sir. And thank you all for tuning in.
Thanks so much.
We cross that, notes are being made. The notes for tonight's presentation will be circulated later. Um, well, not later tonight, to- tomorrow, during the course of the day. Sister Emma Jean, we're going to ask you to close in prayer for us.
Let us pray. Lord above all else, we just want to give you thanks for this beautiful evening and the lessons, oh Lord, that we have learned from Revelations, chapter one through five tonight. Father, we give you thanks for your word. Your word is a lamp unto our feet and a guide to our path. Lord, we have read about the churches, the seven different churches, Lord. We have seen the commendation, oh God, that you have given to each of them. And tonight, Lord, we just want to thank you. We realize, Lord, that one church got no commendation. But tonight we just ask, Lord, that we, as your children, Lord, would look at the whole commendation, criticism, instruction and promise, oh God. And we would take our cues from what you have said to these churches, oh God. We want to thank you especially for Dr. Oliver, Lord, and his time and his patience, Lord, and how he takes his own time to deliver your word, to break it down to us, oh God, in a to a point where we can understand it. And in particular tonight, Lord, I want to lift up Sister Avril before you, Lord. Father, you know her heart. You know what she's going through, Lord. You know the things in her heart tonight, Lord, that she's not comfortable with. But you are the God of love, our shepherd is, whose goodness faileth never. And so tonight, Lord, I ask, Lord, that you put your arms around her another time to bring healing, to bring comfort and to bring cheer. Lord, thank you for everyone who has been on this platform tonight, Lord. Thank you for what we have all learned. And we pray in the name of Jesus that we all will take cues from the lessons we have learned to help us to be better servants for you. Bless us all now as we depart one from the other. In Jesus' name, amen.
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 Thank you, Sister Jean.
Hello, Pastor.
Have a good day to everybody.